... planning board approval for those that's submitted. At 6:45, we'll have a presentation of the Complete Streets Prioritization Plan by Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. At 7:15, we'll have a report from the Open Space Committee regarding the update of the open, of the 2018 update of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. And at 7:30, we'll just have a brief general discussion regarding overall traffic conditions and impacts within the town. Following that, we'll have the Town Planner update, any old new business, then adjournment. So has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of December 11? Any questions, comments, changes? If not, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
So moved, second. All in favor? Close nobody?
I wasn't here, so.
Okay, one extension. Very good. Kevin?
Good evening, everyone. Once again, Kevin Filczek, Economic Development and Tourism Coordinator. Tonight, I have a fairly simple request. The CMRPC has opened their annual DLTA District Local Technical Assistance Grant, and the town would like to apply for it to update its Economic Development Chapter of the Master Plan. So Jean and I met last week or week before to discuss this, and we both agree that that section of the master plan is in need of an update. It hasn't been touched since it was initially written in 2011, and since that time, one of the goals was to hire this position, and thankfully, that has been done. But there's been a few other things that have drastically changed, including the economy. So we really want to make sure that those numbers are reflected in that, as well as trying to get some new data, especially data that reflects where our visitors are coming from. That's something that we don't have in the current plan, that I know the STA is really looking to get, and that would be very helpful for us going forward. So that's the very, very brief gist of it. I know you have a copy of the plan as well. So what I'm asking for tonight is for you to approve of letter of commitment that is before you, and that way, we can submit this to CMRPC, and we can see if we get the grant.
Very good, very good. Any questions or comments for Kevin? If not, could I have a motion then to support the letter of commitment? So moved.
Second.
Second, too? Okay. All in favor? Close nobody? Very good.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you very much. Great, very good. Thank you.
And we get our friends at CMRPC to advance.
Save 50 cents. Okay, so the next item is the presentation of the Complete Streets Prioritization Plan. If you'd introduce yourselves and.
Sure. Dan Daniska from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
Rob Rehman. We're going to give a brief overview of the program and the field work that we've done in the town. So the program is a prioritization work effort that's funded by Mastot, and the end goal is the town is eligible for up to $400,000 in construction funding annually once the plan is complete. So right now, we're in phase two of three of the planning process, so we'll just kind of give you an overview of how we got to where we are tonight and where you'll be moving forward from here. We review needs, safety issues, and gaps in the bicycle and pedestrian network for the town. It's context sensitive. It's not a one-size-fits-all for different towns without, throughout the Commonwealth, and it's really to improve access between home, schools, work, recreation areas, businesses for people that are either on foot, in mobility-assisted devices, or bicycles. You can do a number of projects through the program. We'll briefly touch on things that we've talked about with the town at this point. Some of the examples are traffic and intersection improvements, bicycle facilities, sidewalks, pedestrian-related facilities. Tier one was passing a Complete Streets policy, which took place last, well, December 2017. The town submitted that policy. It was graded by Mastot. As long as it received above an 80 on a 100-point scale, that made the town eligible to participate in the segment that we're in now, which is tier two, the prioritization planning effort. So we contracted with the town in the fall of 2018, and I'm going to let Rob talk about some of our field work-related efforts leading us to tonight.
So before we went out and collected a lot of the data, in office, we did digitization efforts, where we basically looked at different satellite images, saw where sidewalks existed in town, digitized along them, and used Google Street View to kind of get an idea of where the different ADA ramps were. Then in November, just after Thanksgiving, luckily before the first real big snowstorm, we were out and we walked all the streets in town that we saw that had sidewalks. We graded them on a scale of excellent, good, fair, poor. I think we have some different pictures coming up of the different conditions, and we assessed the condition of the ADA ramp. It's not, some towns have asked before if it's similar to an ADA transition plan. It's not. We really just rank if there's a detectable warning panel on the ramp, which is a kind of a yellow pad that, so right here on the far left, that if you're visually impaired, you can kind of tell that there's a ramp there, and the general condition of the ramp, whether it's very usable, not very usable, or in a lot of cases, we see crosswalks to vertical curve ramps, which are not helpful to very many people. So we went out and walked all the sidewalks. We use ArcGIS Collector, which is an extension of ArcGIS that lets us collect it right in the field on iPads, and then uploads it to our systems back.
So the ultimate results you should have in your packet is a table listing of projects. That is a draft listing that we're here to get some feedback on tonight. There's 27, I believe, projects on there, ranging from nude sidewalks to crosswalk improvements to bike lane additions. There's a few streets that have both added on. One of the issues in the town is there's a lot of state-owned roadway. So you'll see in the listing, it'll have Mastot roadway in parentheses. We can add the project listing to the Excel table for that. It's not eligible for the funding, but it's on here, and some of the bike facilities are also on our regional bicycle plan. So it's in multiple plans, so the town can kind of push Mastot to follow its own example, its own program. So you could say the town is requesting funding to do an improvement project on our maintained segment of the roadway, and we'd like the state to match that and continue it on, on the state. Just a brief overview of kind of overarching what's included on there. There's some new sidewalks on Cedar Street, Cedar Pond Road, Arnold Road, 148 connecting subdivision to, down to US 20, New Boston Road Extension, Hall, Fisk Hill, Haynes Street, New Boston Road, and Charlton Street. There's bicycle facilities mainly on state-maintained roads, but also a couple town-maintained roads, and there's extensive crossing improvements, which we've heard from the town and other stakeholders, mainly along 20, which is maintained by the state, but it can kind of push them to make things a little safer out there for people that are here visiting, or town residents that are trying to get across the road. The next step after the plan is approved by Mastot, so the plan will be submitted by the town. Once it's finalized and Mastot reviews it for any things they'd like to see changed, then we would make changes in conjunction with the town. And then, once they accept it, you're eligible to apply for tier three, which is the up to $400,000 to build a project that's listed on the tier-two plan. It functions similarly to chapter 90, so it's not a massive engineering lift like a TIP project would be funded through the CMMPO process. So it's more low-hanging fruit that's easier to deal with, that the town doesn't have to go jump through a bunch of hoops to get completed. So you don't have to wait five to 10 years to get it built. It could be built as soon as next year if they select your project. As I mentioned earlier, there's a draft listing of 27 projects. The next steps are really to take comment tonight, finalize the listing, the town will submit it to the state, and we'll make any corrections as necessary, hoping that the town will be able to apply for tier-three funding this spring.
Very good. Thank you. So Jean, what's the next thing?
So the next thing is that we actually have some maps, and we're going to have people kind of, I think we're going to probably clean off this table and set up a map here. We'll have people gather around this table, and Dan will kind of help. Dan, Rebecca, and I will help people see where they are on the map. If there are other improvements that you want to be considered to be included in the plan, we'll mark that up. And then, I also just wanted, for the record, to let everyone know that Tom Chamberlain, on behalf of the Trails Committee, has submitted a list of their trail project issues and areas that we might be able to potentially look at along the trails to add some improvements as well. And I provided that to Dan, and you all have a copy in your packet this evening. Also, Rebecca did post this information on the Sturbridge Facebook community page, and she's compiled all the comments that were posted on there as well, so we'll call through this to see if there's anything that we don't have currently in the prioritization plan to add that. And if you're happy with the input that you received tonight, then Dan, Rebecca, Rob, and I will work to finalize this plan, send you the final draft for review, and then, what is the timing for sending it in?
We'd hope to have you submit it by the end of this month.
The end of this month.
Just so they have time to take it, take a look at it.
All right. So as soon as we get that back from Dan, we'll circulate it to all of you, and maybe if, at the end of this evening, if you would want to take a vote to submit it to DOT, once we've submitted the draft comments to you, and you can give us any feedback if you notice anything that seems amiss. If any real concerns come up, then we would have the opportunity to place this on our January 22 agenda, if you feel more comfortable waiting until the 22nd to vote on the final draft.
Very good. Okay, do you want to start the process?
So we will clean off our tables, so everyone can kind of gather around.
Are we just going to get out each one and discuss each one in order, or how do you want?
I think you're looking to do things that aren't on the plan, or do you want him to go over each one of the items, Charlie?
Well, it's up to you. I mean, whatever form it is, it's fine with me.
I mean, it could be helpful, there's some, either typos or things that are just a little confusing on this.
Okay.
We might be able to, I don't know if anyone else saw that.
Do you want to start with that, then?
Sure.
Sure. Good, good, all right. Are there handouts up there on this, if anyone didn't get one? Or anyone didn't get one?
Did you put the sound of my clock? Did you? I'm doing the job, but it's, it's only on the PC, it's on. All right, so we're just going to grab a mic and we'll go through these one at a time.
Great.
So I don't know if anyone has any specific questions to start, or if you just want to go through each project.
I think we just go briefly, you know, identify each one, and you know.
Number one is a lot of crossings put together, but they're all on state road. So it's talking about making crosswalk improvements either through existing signals along 20, or adding beacon, rapid flashing beacons, or just including high-visibility sidewalks, I'm sorry, crosswalks along their paint application. So it has 20 at Friendly's and McDonald's, Stallion Hill Road, Cedar Street, Snell Street, Crescent Way, Arnold Road, Hinman Street, and the Sturbridge Marketplace. So those are, we really can't make a request for specific things, but it's more to nudge the state in the direction of looking at improving safety at those locations.
Okay, good, very good.
Number two is crosswalk improvements, again, at 131 and Maple and Haynes, which is another state-owned roadway. That's upgrading the signal to allow for pedestrian crossing countdowns. As it is now, it just has the hand and the walk signal, so it doesn't tell you how long you have to actually cross the street. So that would be a safety improvement there. Number three is a new crosswalk at 12 Cedar Street, which is to improve crossing between shared parking in that area and businesses along Cedar Street. We heard that it was heavily used between the two sides of the road, so we figured it would be a help to get people more visible there.
Right, yeah, that's one that seems to have a lot of comments on the Facebook page as well.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Can I ask a question about the crosswalks? The crosswalks will, they really are going to be painted. They won't be, we won't have a change of the materials in the crosswalk, so that there's a distinction between, in some towns, we've looked at this before, that they're, they have almost inlaid stone or something, you know, so it differentiates between the road and the crosswalk. So if there's, if they're painted now, the crosswalk is painted, they're going to enhance that painting, but they're not going to change the materials or anything like that, I take it.
I would defer to the town on that. You could either do a high-visibility paint, or they'll stamp the asphalt to make it look like brickwork.
Right.
Type of thing.
Right.
And then, there'd also be the possibility for a push-button beacon there that would flash, so you would be able to know. Or it could include lighting or anything along those.
Yeah.
Yeah, in other towns, they've done more retro reflective paint.
Right.
As opposed to just the typical white paint.
Right.
It's not always easy to see at nighttime.
Right.
Right, and you know, is there, is there a guideline for how often that is repainted? Because I think what happens with a program like this is that, you know, we get this, and it looks great, and then if we don't have a follow-up for, I don't know what the length of life of a crosswalk paint is, but then we are kind of back where we are right now, talking about the same thing again, five years from now, because we haven't, they haven't been painted or upgraded, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I can't speak to specifics. I know that it would be paid for either through the grant, or if it was on the state road, they'd put it in originally.
Okay.
But typically, it's up to the town to maintain it after that point.
Okay.
So we would really defer to the town as to how they would want to handle it.
Yeah, one of the things, you know, on the regular, you know, paint that we use, generally, they have to be repainted every year.
Right.
I mean, if you look at this, by the time you get to this time of year, or not this time, into the summer, a lot of them need repainting. There are others that, you know, certainly last longer. But then, it brings up a question I have, because obviously, there's a different cost associated with how much we put into it, whether we put, you know, textured material in there and so forth. So I assume, is there a cost estimate already worked out for these?
There's not, well, we're working on that with the town through Public Works and with Jean.
Okay.
So we put it into a formula to estimate it, and then, when the town applies for a specific project, they do a little more legwork to really get those costs down to the dollar.
Okay, thanks.
Is there, is there a reason why you've only included one of the crosswalks on 131, the one here? I mean, the one down below here, you can't even, might as well not even be there, you know, because it's right in front of the public house. This is another example.
No, that's why we have public comment. We have these to the.
I mean, I think it should be the whole corridor, Route 20 and 131, to improve the crosswalks, right, right straight through.
Considering I nearly get hit there every day when I walk out lunch, you think I would have thought of that, but I didn't.
At 12 Cedar Street, and again, down below here, those are what they call mid-block crosswalks, which particularly, well, the manual and uniform traffic control devices discourages creating mid-block. But where you have to, like, say, 12 Cedar Street, we know there's a lot of people crossing. We have to be specially careful to make sure it's high visibility, and because motorists don't expect the crosswalk in between streets. So we have to be specially careful every time we add one. We don't want to add some that aren't necessary.
Right.
Very good.
One comment I have with this crosswalk at 12 Cedar, which I do believe is needed, is should it be tied to the next project, which was extending the sidewalk? Because I'm just wondering, to have a crosswalk without it connecting to a sidewalk could pose another safety issue, in the sense that pedestrians wouldn't have anywhere to stand while they're, you know, about to cross.
There has to be a connection for the sidewalks.
There has to be.
Or a crosswalk, excuse me, which is why we don't have one there now, because there's nothing to connect it to, so.
So I guess my question would be, should these two be combined together or separate?
They have to be listed separately on the.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, if they're under $400,000, you could combine the two and apply for them both at the same time.
Okay.
So moving on, we have new sidewalk on Cedar Street for the next, it's really three phases of a larger project, so adding a couple segments to the school, and then up to Cedar Pond, and then down Cedar Pond to the recreation area, and appropriate crosswalks at that, each of those intersections.
Can I ask why you've chosen the west side of Cedar Street in that location?
I believe that was a right-of-way or a wetlands issue.
There's a wetlands on one side of the road.
The only reason I ask that question is, I know those houses that are on the knoll, you've got their water lines going through, and you take another five feet out of that bank, and you're going to have to be relocating their water lines going into the houses.
We'll have to look at that a little more carefully on the mapping, especially, we're trying to, it's kind of.
You know, you get the wall, you get the.
Yeah.
The two family there where they park right on the side of the road, they use that for parking, and I think you're going to open up a can of worms there on the.
Look at that a little more clearly.
Just on number four, five, and six, when you're talking about safety for walk-through to school, you could influence it. There are no sidewalks on Burgess School Road going in, so actually, it's going to make things safer, plus, the students don't walk to school. They all get picked up if they live on the corner, so that really doesn't fit there.
Could they walk, could they walk if there was a sidewalk provided? Could they?
Well, there's no sidewalk on Burgess Road going in, and the wetlands on the right going in, and not too much on the left, plus, you're talking all less traffic and car traffic.
I have seen children walking to, say, a Little League game or something like that along that route, and also, the funding for these three projects, if Burgess School Committee incurred, could be, you could have the funding for this under a Safe Streets School funding rather than under Complete Streets funding.
It could be either or, they could be in tandem at the same time.
So you might be able to get a Safe Streets.
Yeah, one of the big issues, you know, with that access road to Burgess is that when we're on the, the building committee really did try to have sidewalks put in there, but because of the wetlands there, it really was prohibitive. I mean, there is no space really to put that in there. So if you really wanted to have, you know, walkable to that school, it may have to be some sort of another entrance way.
Or a bridge or something.
Or it could just be a shoulder that's striped and marked off from auto travel over the bridge and then down the driveway. We've seen that in other areas.
Yeah, the road itself is rather narrow because of the wetlands itself, with the buses and traffic that go through there as well, though, unfortunately.
Well, one thing that we did hear too, when we were working on the plan, was from recreation about the need for a sidewalk down to the Cedar Street Recreation Area. So we were really thinking about that, and thinking that it would go past the school driveway.
Right.
And to the recreation, so when we said, you know, safer to go to the school, we're kind of thinking about kids that are maybe going to that game after school.
Yeah.
And I realized there's no sidewalk down Burgess Street, but if we're trying to get to Recreation, we're going to go past there anyway.
Right, yeah, a lot of people walk on the road anyway. I mean, it's certainly, you know, the sidewalk could be beneficial, even if the students don't necessarily.
Number seven is Arnold Road. It's improving the sidewalk that is existing and adding new sidewalk around the senior center area, and including connectivity and a crosswalk across the street. Number eight is extending the sidewalk along 20 to get to the Recreation Area. Number nine is the sidewalk connection to connect the close subdivisions on 148 and Colette Road down to 20. We have 10 is crossing improvements at 148 and 20. Again, like, out front here is, there's no countdown for that signal, to improve safety and accessibility there. 11 is new sidewalk on Boston Road Extension. We heard that it was a pretty popular walking route to get people down, down that roadway. People walk on it anyway, I believe. And then, we have sidewalk repairs on 20 around the Blackington Building. Sidewalk's kind of in bad shape in that area. Everywhere else on 20 is in pretty good shape. Hall Road is new sidewalk and bike lanes. That is something that's on our regional bicycle plan, to kind of avoid the 84 and 20 interchange, if you're traveling regionally on a bike to get from 131 to 20, heading in that direction. And we heard that people walk that road anyway, so it would be a big safety improvement to get a sidewalk on there. Fisk Hill Road is kind of the same thing, adding a sidewalk so people can walk safely off roadway. Haynes Street sidewalk extension is right out here, I believe, to extend the sidewalk down to the Public House Entry Road. You have visitors to the area that are staying, that want to walk around to the different businesses. New Boston Road is a new sidewalk, which will improve access to 20 and the residential areas, as well as to the Westville Lake Recreation Area.
So that's a, that should be removed, because that's, that, is that what you're going to say, Mary? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. That was the type, that was the type I was referring to, yeah. And audubon spelt, the first O should be a U.
Yes, that is, that's true. Well, moving on, we have, thank you for your feedback. Moving on, we have number 17, which is safety signage along a number of streets between the Pike and 20, really just kind of calm traffic. We heard there's a lot of high-speed travel on those areas, and people that live along there aren't thrilled with that. And then, we have a bunch of bike lane projects along Mastot-maintained roadways. 131, really from 20 down to South Bridge, and then 20 from Brimfield to 131.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
About that? Many of us have seen what has gone on between, after you've Sturbridge going into Brimfield, and that was a two-lane road, and now we have a bike path.
Yes.
And, you know, it's, it's been thought whether that was a safe way of promoting pedestrian use. We can't afford the road space here in, on Route 20, across the town of Sturbridge, to put in a bike path, unless we take land. We can't, we can't do without two lanes.
Actually, I'll disagree. If you look at the Commercial Tourist District study that we did, and you might not have been on the board yet, but we do have conceptual plans that show, within the existing right-of-way, if we shift the striping on the lanes, there is actually adequate room for that. In one area, there has to be what's called a sharrow, which means you're sharing the road with the cars, but from Fiskale up to, almost to Friendly's, there was sufficient room to stripe a bike lane there, believe it or not. And the plans are on our website.
I believe, I believe it, but I just know what a nightmare.
It's hard to visualize, yeah.
And it is hard to visualize shifting everything as it exists now.
It's really just the striping.
It's so congested.
It is, and I'm probably in the minority, but I travel Route 20 through Brimfield every day, and I think it's much better the way it is now than it was before, so, the way it's striped now.
Okay. I'm glad you like it.
But whatever's worth, that's what I do.
I'm glad you like it.
Well, I'm in the minority, Charlie.
I'm glad I am.
Well, I tried.
I'm a little worried when the, when the paint. I'm a little worried when the, when the paint doesn't look so good, that might be more of a problem.
It does feel safer.
I've seen a couple of bikers.
Yeah, not often.
But it is slower, though.
Yeah, I, I think the one, to build on Sue's point, the one thing that should be considered is the traffic on Route 20 is a big problem. A lot of people are complaining about that. For the folks that live on that side of town, there's really no other routes to get down the road. So, I think anything that would, could potentially improve the traffic situation, we should be looking at. But anything that might hurt it, definitely, you know, I think we should, we should hold off on until we have better information as to what would happen in that corridor.
Well, any of the improvements on state roadways anyway, Mastot's policy is that it has to be bicycle friendly. So, if they're redoing any portion of Route 20, you are going to see the same, not necessarily the same thing that happened going to Brimfield, but they will be incorporating bike and pedestrian roads within that corridor, so.
Sidewalks are nice.
Gene, I did have a question. Looking to expand some of the sidewalks on Route 20. Does the state own enough width to expand the sidewalks and incorporate a bike path? There's so many spots of that, it is kind of narrow.
Yeah, it is, so it is very narrow going through Fiskdale, but we do have the, at least conceptual plans. Based, we did do a survey of the corridor, and based on the conceptual plans that Para Engineering created for us, there does appear that there's adequate width there for sidewalks and bike lanes.
For the wider sidewalks in there. Any consideration given to possibly moving the poles to the opposite side of the street, getting them out of the sidewalk?
So, actually.
You can't do that everywhere because it's sidewalk on both.
So, I think that's a discussion we have to have with the Board of Selectmen now. So, our Commercial Tourist District Study called for, first choice was undergrounding the utility lines. So, recently, at the request of the Board of Selectmen, I met with all of the utilities with Leon Goleman when he was still here, and we did get quotes on what it would cost just to do the study for that. It was ninety thousand dollars just for the study. We had to hire an engineer, and then each utility wanted some funding. So, both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen recommended no action on that article at the special town meeting that we just had. So, I think now, you know, the concern is the expense of all of this. So, I think that going forward, we need to have some additional discussions between the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen about what's our next step? And should we be looking at maybe just relocating some of the poles to make it?
As far as moving underground, I don't know if Charlie would know, but wasn't there some discussion about doing this back in the 1990s?
There was, there was a proposal several years ago, and, you know, at that time, the electric company was not maybe in cars again. But certainly allowing it by putting a surcharge on the electric bills. But the decision the board made at the time was that it would be too much to have done it at that time, so it wasn't done. It was only along that section of Route 20.
Most of our sidewalks on Route 20 are not ADA compliant at all because the width of the sidewalk, I mean, with the poles in them, you, an average person can barely walk around them without walking on the grass of someone's yard, let alone someone that's disabled. So, I mean, that's something that, you know, I don't know how that works in terms of compliance with these things, but I would think the state should step in. A lot of towns probably have the same issue that we do. And now that we've changed the laws and things have changed over time, it, there should be a way, and I know this is a great funding program too, but there should be a way that some of that is funded so that we are compliant and our towns can meet the requirements for the disabled people. Because we did that walk, Gene, and you and I couldn't, you can't even have two people walk side by side on the sidewalk.
One of us was in the street most of the time.
Most people walk in the street, exactly.
One, one thing that CMRPC is working on this year is a corridor profile of the section of Route 20 between Route 131 and 148. The corridor profile will take into account some of the things that you're looking at. And also, you know, it will give us some idea on how that corridor functions. We all know that there's a lot of traffic there, and they've actually done the traffic counts already. And so, they'll do a traffic count analysis to see what we have to do. I mean, it may require some widening in some areas and so forth to accommodate the existing traffic and protect the traffic flow in that corridor. So, sidewalks would definitely be, and bicycle access would be a part of that. What will come out of the profile, the next step after the profile would be done is the town would have to consider doing a functional design, which I believe, personally think at that time, the underground utility should be evaluated, whether that's feasible or not.
One of the things I remember from the discussion a few years ago was who would pick up the tab if the lines were underground for connection to all existing buildings and homes, which would be a tremendous amount of money. And at the time, I think that was kind of a deal breaker.
Well, but we're still not compliant. You know, we can, we can say we can't afford it, but at some point, somebody's going to, you know.
Well, it certainly brings up a lot of issues.
Yeah, I believe, I believe the study that Gene was referring to was the underground utility studies would come up with cost estimates for connections all the way to the building. It has been done before, where all that work is done is called the force accounts. The funding has to be used to do that.
I know when the town installs water lines, they only install them up to your property, up to your property line. And the question is, would the same thing be done for the electrical lines? Or would the town go even further, even go into buildings, which private buildings is a difficult thing to endure against?
I mean, electrical lines are a little different, where they do, you know, bring up to your property anyway. So, I think, I believe that even the price we had years ago for, you know, putting the underground utilities along Route 20 included, you know, connection to the buildings. I mean, you really can't just say, okay, it's there now, and if you don't want to pay your money, you're not going to get your electricity. So, that's another issue, I think. Why don't we move on with this, and then we can get to what we started to do about any new projects.
And then the last one is a Charlton Street sidewalk extension to kind of fill in a small gap around the town common.
So, then the plan was to kind of go to other areas?
Have people come up, if you have ideas for projects that you haven't mentioned, try to find the area on the map so that we can mark up the map and.
Is there anything that would use with that now to try to get people in the right direction, or?
These are the same maps.
That's what I was thinking, so maybe we could, you have a pointer or something?
There is a pointer on that.
I mean, unless you want to have people, if people have ideas that are sitting here, if they just want to let us know the idea and market, is that what you're?
Well, either way, I mean, does anyone have any ideas for projects that we have not seen? You've had some great input so far.
One of the things I was thinking about is that Commonwealth Avenue, I don't know if you had proposed a crosswalk there. And Commonwealth Avenue going into Heritage Green needs a sidewalk. There is a lot of pedestrian traffic there already, a ton of it. And also, if, at some point where the sidewalk is extended to street or road, if that could be, there would have to be a crosswalk from, because you stay on the north side of Route 20 with the sidewalks, so that street or road. And probably River Street, it'd probably want sidewalks because Tom mentioned that the bike.
There's a trail.
Trail, so that would be probably signage for Grand Trunk Trail and sidewalk crossing at River Street.
Any other thoughts, suggestions? Yes?
We came for the Cedar Street part. We thought it was a typo, the east-west side. We live at 24, so we're on the east side. The people on the west side basically have no room there, so we thought it'd be going in on our side and connecting Route 20 to the school and et cetera. What is the pushback as far as wetlands on that side? I know it's that small section right for the driveway.
It is a small section. We'll have to look at that more. We had talked about kind of both sides of the roadway there and where we could, you know, fit things. And I think when we were talking about on the west side of the road, we were talking about if you went up, if you extended it further, then there's kind of more room on the west.
Right.
So, we'll have to look at that. I think you're correct. On the lower portion of it, we really have been talking all along the eastern side. And then, if it extended further, which I'm not sure we would ever go any further, I think you'd have to cross over.
Yeah, because I was just wondering if the wetlands, whatever, the people can understand that a small piece, you know, would be going to make a better sidewalk for everybody.
Right, so, you know, anything like that would have to go through the Conservation Commission. And there is a possibility that you could fill and replicate. We're going to put Becky on this, but for a limited project, there, you know, there are ways to work with that. So, we'll look at that a little bit more. You know, we've been passing this paper along, and as you can see, we're going to Westville on Route 20, so.
You know, we live there, and we see how many people walk by our house, through our yard every day. And a lot of people gain access to the Cedar Street Rec area by going up the driveway for Burgess and going down that stair set and all. And so, just connecting it safely. And we thought it was a great idea, and we're more than glad to give that part of our front yard to it. I think our neighbors are, a couple of the neighbors that we talked to are in agreement with it. There's only one person really on that street, the last street before the school, or this house before the school, his house is the closest. And so, he would probably be the one person, but I think, you know, everybody's kind of in agreement that needs to be sidelined here.
It is, it's dangerous, yeah.
It kind of crests, and as people come up it, it's hard to see people.
And it's hard to see pulling out of there, too. But we do appreciate your input and appreciate you coming out. And we will take a better look at that and update our notes.
Heck, is the house directly across the street from us?
It's right on the street.
I don't know where they even parked.
No, you're right, you're right.
A lot of dark, scary streets, dangerous.
It may not be part of the Complete Streets component, but you can still, I know it came up on Facebook.
Yeah, there are, there are a couple concerns that may not be part of this project, and you can just let me know and let the audience know. The lighting in town on some of our streets, New Boston Road is dark. Never mind, there are many, many busy roads in our town that are extremely dark and dangerous. So, I, I don't know if lighting is being discussed in this portion.
Lighting is eligible if you're doing a pedestrian or a bicycle improvement along that segment.
Okay, good.
But if it's just a road that could use more streetlights.
Now, that could use sidewalks, too.
Well, then that would be an eligible addition to the project, but if it's just lights out where nobody's walking.
Yeah, no, 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 yes.
Yeah, because I would say New Boston Road, Cedar, and Arnold, if we're putting in sidewalks, lighting could definitely make an improvement on those roads.
Very good. Anything else?
I just wanted to make a comment, because I, I did spend time on Facebook, not just looking at the most recent posts, but I went back and looked at what people have said over the last couple of years, too. We have a lot of consistencies with these projects that are being addressed, which I think is really amazing to see. And regarding the lighting, I believe that with the green streets policy. Green community program, sorry, I do work in the planning department. Green, with that program, one of the things that we'll be looking into is replacing the streetlights with LEDs, which should greatly help the visibility, because I think personally I see that, too, driving down Route 20 after work, it's very, very dark. And I think that sooner than later, with funding and with these new policies in place and programs, we'll see some improvements. And I'm looking forward to that, and really glad for folks coming out today. Thank you.
Very good, yes, thank you all.
Took the words out of my mouth on that. And I was going to say also, I recently forwarded some information to the Board of Selectmen about the streetlight replacement program for National Grid, and I'm hoping to have some conversations about that in the coming weeks as well.
Very good. Well, I think as Gene mentioned before, all those Facebook comments will be reviewed and considered in the whole thing as we move forward. So, anything else on this section? Thank you again all for coming for that, and we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, just so the Open Space Committee can get ready, the next item will be the 2018 update of the Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Thank you so much.
Hope you care, would you like to introduce your committee?
Yes, I'm the, we're the Open Space Committee. I'm Carol Goodman, the chair, and this is Lynn Sadi, and Peter. I'm sorry. And Elisa Galpin. And we've all been together a long time, but, so I'm sorry. Thank you for having us, and we're here to introduce you to our new Open Space Plan. We'd like you to, and to encourage you to use it. There's a lot of information in here. The Planning Board has a tremendous impact on the many goals of the Open Space Plan. The concerns expressed by the residents of Sturbridge to the Open Space Committee and our public outreach. We're to maintain the small-town character of our community, protect our groundwater resources, and expand active and passive recreation for all. Projects before the Planning Board impact these goals. So, we would like to encourage you to use our Open Space and Recreation Plan as a tool when these projects are being considered. For example, a great resource is the Open Space Map on your page 146, and it folds out, and it's right here. Now, we made it pretty dense so that you can, there's a lot of information on it. So, we figured you could just look at it and get a real understanding of how this town is developed. You see the density of certain areas and where we have our open space, our preserved open spaces. Also, on page 216 of your plan is a map of the town divided in quadrants for the public survey that we sent out. Both maps display the density of development and the need and the access to open space and recreation land by different neighborhoods. Now, we've broken this down to a few, this is going to be quick, we're not going to take long, because there's a lot of information there. And you guys are going to have to go through it yourselves. Lynn Sadi will now discuss how open space, development, and recreation affect our growth and development patterns, something like we're discussing here tonight.
Well, I really don't have too much to say other than it was shown that people are interested in the small-town character. And I think Sturbridge is really losing that. Sturbridge's growth and development has gotten to the point where everybody's complaining about traffic. I'm a senior, I don't use the senior center because I'm afraid I'm going to die of old age taking a left-hand turn out of Arnold Road. I really feel bad for the people who live on Arnold Road. Farquhar Road where I live, I used to, years ago, drive my pony and cart down to Hebert's with my young son after supper. Now, I'm afraid to walk on Farquhar Road. The trailer trucks come barreling up and down the road as fast as they can, all using it as a shortcut. The traffic on holiday weekends is gridlocked on Farquhar Road. I can't even get out of my driveway. People are turning around on my front lawn because they are sick of waiting in the gridlock. Sturbridge is definitely in danger of losing its small-town character, and that's what makes Sturbridge attractive to people. I mean, if people wanted to live in Framingham, they'd live in Framingham. We don't want to turn Sturbridge into Framingham. And the traffic situation, I think, is becoming like that. It's really very sad. Our open spaces are very, very important, and our limit on growth and development, I think, is. limit on growth and development, I think, is very important. I think the town has pretty much reached its, its maximum without making it extremely unpleasant for the people who live here. And I think open space plays a big part in that, and we urge you to take that into consideration when people come to you with, with projects. And, you know, you have a really good map here that shows where there's the densest concentration of areas. Corridors are really important. The loss of the Doughty property was a big blow to the Open Space Committee. I mean, I've been on it for maybe fifteen, twenty years, so long I can't even remember now. And that was, in all the years that I've been on it, that was our number-one priority, and now that's going to more development. I think we really have to take a long, hard look at what we want the character of the town to be.
Very good. Thank you.
And Lisa will address our environmental concerns, and how it concerns the Planning Board, too. I know you're, you know, you're, you work within our bylaws, but also, things have to be considered when you're considering projects, I think.
It's just a few of the elements in Section 4, which is the environmental analysis. Three things that we're particularly concerned about as we go forward with our work. The first is landscape character, and that touches on what Lynn was just saying about the character of the town. The Open Space Committee believes it is essential to preserve the beautiful vistas created by the town's hills, lakes, and woods. Some of these areas are developed, are threatened by development pressures and limited protection, and I, too, would mention the recent example of the, the loss of the spectacular heritage landscape of the Barrett Farm. The Open Space Committee will continue to work with all the relevant boards and committees to maintain the town's special landscape character. The second element that we are concerned about is water resources, and the town's water resources, obviously crucial for drinking water, but also for wildlife habitat and for recreational opportunities. As a resident of McGilpin Road, I became intimately familiar with the need for groundwater protection recently. Our well test results showed high levels of lead contamination. That's a different story. Regarding recreation on, and water resources, the Open Space Committee looks forward to working with the Planning Board to expand public access to water resources, notably the Quinne Bog River, and this is one of the items mentioned in our, our seven-year action plan. I think Carol may refer to that in a few minutes. And the last issue that I would mention is environmental equity. The Open Space Committee is concerned about inequities between areas in the town that have a fair amount of open space and others that have little or none. And, again, we have talked about this, but if you look at the Open Space Map, you see there, it seems to me, there are two, two kinds of areas that are particularly densely populated. One is in, around the lakes. For example, Big Alum Lake has high residential density, but all the lakes in town do. And the other neighborhoods that we feel have little to no open space are the northwest and the southeast quadrants of the town. These disparities are concerning, because we know that the presence or absence of open space can affect health and well-being. And many of you may know that Stanford University published a study a few years ago that clearly shows a correlation between health and connection with green space and open space. For this reason, the Open Space Committee's priority going forward will be preserving those parcels in areas of the town that do not have open space. And again, we look forward to collaborating with the Planning Board on this priority issue.
Now, in the action plan of the, of the Open Space Plan, the, the Planning Board is charged with helping to promote access to the Quinne Bog and the, and the riverlands from the commercial tourist district. A bridge would help, would connect, would be a highlight and benefit to tourists and the town economically. Also, it would encourage the use of the trails in that area. It would be, you know, another tourist attraction. It'd be awesome. The implementation of the Commercial Tourist Revitalization Plan, much of what we've been talking about here with complete streets, including streetscape improvements and pocket parks, would help to preserve our small-town character. Planning Board's support for the acquisition of significant properties for open space and recreation help, help create large tracts for connectivity and resource protection. Now, you know, there is a sustainability element on all of our development. You have to be aware of that. Again, we're going, I'm going to mention the Barrett Farm, too. One connected piece that we lost was the Barrett property, even though 59% of the town meeting supported it. We were promised by, the, the Open Space was promised by the developers and at the town meeting that, that we would get a certain tract of land, but we had no legal assurances. You know, the town really fell down there. We didn't, we didn't go with the town administrator to the developers or to, in any legal way, to assure that we would get this property that connects the riverlands to the Heinz Farm. It was just the last piece of a wonderful project that we had worked on for years and years. And it's, it's really a shame. And right now, we're in nowhere land, and this project will be coming back before you for a new subdivision, I'm sure, because you haven't given them any approval yet, I don't believe. And so they've changed their minds, I don't know how many times. So I'm just using this, I don't mean to be bringing up, you know, a sore subject or anything, but I'm using this as an example, that how, you know, we could work together, maybe in a more positive way. It was done quickly. We didn't really have much conversation among the boards, and I just would like to say, you know, we wish we had had more and more cooperation, you know, among all of us. And, so we hope you will help us provide these needed connecting pieces, and also for the neighborhoods that, I hope you will study the map for us, and when you're looking at new subdivisions, be aware that it does improve the health of a community. It improves their recreation. It improves the lives of their children. So I really hope you will read our plan.
Always sensible.
Yeah. And I just would like to, you know, I just want to thank Jean and Rebecca. They did an amazing job for us. Tremendous. And Central Mass Regional Plan, which I know is gone, but they helped a lot, and all the other town employees. I want to thank them.
Great.
So if you have any questions, shoot.
No, thank, thank you very, very much, and thank you for your commitment to this. And really, I think the Planning Board and, and, you know, basically, the town has really tried to support this. And I think, you know, one example we have, even that list we got from Tom Chamberlain about linking some of these trails and so forth, from the Grant Trunk Trails to all this other area, you can see what we have accomplished. I think, you know, I know we can dwell on a, you know, concern about losing a prime property like that, but I think we should also, you know, look back at the accomplishments we've made.
Oh, we're delighted. I mean, believe me, we're not.
I mean, really, for a town this size, what we have, it's really phenomenal. So we appreciate all you've done. Are there any questions or comments on the plan now?
I have a question, Josh. I have a question. Have you prioritized the open space that we have that you feel is most important? I know we have a long list in here of parcels that are open and so on, but have you?
Well, we have a lot, lots of times what happens is, it's when a piece of property comes up for sale, that we have an opportunity. I mean, there are properties for sale now in the neighborhoods that we like, the Fisk Hill neighborhood. And when we, when you look at the map, you can see there are open spaces, but they're not preserved, you know? And when you see the white spaces, there's no, you know, those are just open parcels only owned by, owned by normal people or, or commercial people or whatever people.
Home who could sell them for development.
Yes. And particularly vulnerable in areas where there's sewer and water, because you can build on anything then, you know, even rock, really. And we've seen them build on rocks.
Well, obviously, I've known from the past with things that have become available that we've really, obviously, like talking about the different parcels that come up, and we hope that we'll be able to afford to buy them and so on. But I'm just wondering if at some point, your group could.
Well, I'll tell you what would really help.
Help us with prioritizing some of these.
Like, if people in the neighborhoods of Fisk Hill, or people around the lakes, particularly Big Alum, where that's a bowl, and all that backland is undeveloped. And, you know, if they, if, if, like, the lake associations or the neighborhoods would come to us and say, we'd really try and get some community preservation money, or raise some money to buy the parcel that's out back there, because people really think the woods behind them are preserved, and most of the time, they're not.
They are.
And so it's, it's an outcry to the, the community at large, really, to say, if you're concerned about your neighborhood, come to us. We can work with you, if, particularly for parcels for sale.
Yeah.
It's really hard for us to say, well, we'll spend, you know, the town will spend $200,000 to $500,000, half a million dollars on 75 acres. I know there's a parcel in my neighborhood I'd love to buy, but, you know, I, it just, it has to be a neighborhood, I would say, a group coming to us, or someone with an idea, particularly when the parcel's for sale, because for us to, we're priorities tracks that help with recreation.
Right.
And, you know, and, and water preservation, you know.
And corridors.
And corridors, yeah. This, we've been really focused on that, because we've been very fortunate, like Charlie said. It's been unbelievable. It really has, with the, with the help of the state and, you know, and Community Preservation Fund, you know.
Great. Very good.
No, I think your points were taken, Lisa, with the, you know, the impact on our, not just the community, but the, as a, as a big picture, I think our individual neighborhoods benefit from preserving open space, too. Even small parcels make a difference in a neighborhood, too.
Oh, well, I, I'm going to use a personal example. My son just moved back to town, and he took a run down near the Halls Brook area, and he couldn't believe the beauty of it. And he didn't grow up in that area. So it's just, we're very fortunate.
Really is, yeah.
It's beautiful, you know, and so, we're lucky. We're very lucky.
We certainly are very fortunate. And thank you again for all your work on this. Very good. Thank you. Okay, the next item is something I asked to be added on to this agenda, and it really fits into some of the things we've heard from the discussion on the community, on the complete streets, and also some of the concerns, you know, raised regarding the increase in traffic conditions. I know that recently, there was a petition presented to the Board of Selectmen for the traffic problems that have occurred on Farquhar Road, and I think they were referred to by a few of the other residents. I happen to live on Farquhar Road myself. And one of the things that came up was, in talking with the interim town administrator, Ted Kozak, he mentioned that he was, you know, looking into the possibility of a cost for a traffic study to address that issue on, on Farquhar Road. And I just wanted to discuss the fact that, you know, I certainly understand what the problem is there, and it is a serious problem, but the bulk of that problem, you know, occurs from, you know, the busy times when 84 backs up, and the Mass Pike backs up, and people looking for alternative routes. And at that point, it isn't just Farquhar Road that's impacted. It's Haynes Street, it's Hall Road. And, and so I think that what I'd like to do is have a little discussion on that and see whether or not we might be able to at least convey our thoughts to the Board of Selectmen that if a traffic study is done to address, you know, that issue that was brought up as, on, on Farquhar, that it be expanded to recognize that, you know, it needs to be looked at really townwide. And I think Greg, you know, mentioned that, Greg Morse did, when we were at a meeting for the DPW Director Search thing, that it's one of the things that he has noticed has really been a change in the community as far as, you know, the, the frequency and regularity of the traffic backup. So, that was, anyway, I just wanted to kind of open up that for discussion.
Everybody has an application on their phone now for alternate routes, so that never were available in years past, so that's why I'm sure Farquhar Road's become real popular.
Well, it has, and not only Farquhar. I mean, that's.
But a lot of them have.
But also, the, you know, the traffic, you know, has come up because of, it seems everywhere. I mean, right now, it seems like every day, you know, Route 20 West is bumper-to-bumper, you know, from 4:30 to 6:30. I mean, it's just amazing. It wasn't like that before. You had a comment?
Has anybody reached out to Google Maps or Waze? Because they actually do take input from the public, where if you have a street that is a common cut-through, or it used to be only known to townies, right?
Right.
Right.
Now it's available with a route.
Right.
You can actually have that blocked on the mapping software.
I think that was brought up in a Board of Selectmen meeting as well. Yeah. So it has been. Yep. So?
Yes. We had talked about that when we brought up the thing on Farquhar Road. I think while you do that traffic study, though, please consider, as this lady here, Lynn, is it Lynn?
Yes.
Said that the tractor trailers on Farquhar Road and the commercial buses, I'm not talking school buses, the commercial buses, I couldn't believe it, Thanksgiving weekend, they're coming up and down the road.
And they turned around on my right lawn.
Right.
With ruts this deep in the wet grass.
Yeah. And again, on Thanksgiving weekend, that's certainly, you know, an indication of the problem we have, you know, during that, you know, heavy traffic period.
But the tractor trailers are every day.
Well, right. But we also have a one-lane bridge down there, but I don't think there's a loading for that. So part of that is enforcement as well. I mean, the police department has to recognize, I think, as well, to enforce that. And I, I think that this discussion is good to make that the point, but we do have, you know, other boards and committees and agencies and departments that really need to enforce that, because certainly, you know, when we have the load limit on that one-lane bridge down there, it certainly doesn't expect you'll have, you know, big trailer trucks and full tour buses on there. And so it needs to be enforced, and I guess that goes back to the Board of Selectmen.
Grant funding.
I have reached out to the police force about the tractor trailers going up and down the road. And, I mean, they sat there for a couple of days, but it hasn't stopped it. I think unless there's something from the town that says tractor-trailer trucks can't use this residential road, the police don't have any authority to stop them.
Right. Yeah.
And what this young man mentioned about reaching out to Waze, is that possible? Because that's what's happening.
Yeah, it is possible.
Waze and Google are sending everybody down Farquhar Road, because the Trent Pike and.
There was a pretty well-publicized story about the George Washington Bridge.
Yes.
Yes.
And that there's a neighborhood, there was experiencing insane amounts of traffic. They reached out and got it blocked.
Some way that a board like you can reach out to Waze and say?
Well, maybe more the Board of Selectmen. I think that was what was discussed.
I think the town administrator, it was recommended the other day, I think the town administrator is the one that would have to reach out, because it has to obviously be someone of authority within a community. And I think, you know, we can talk later and, and talk a lot more.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, go ahead. One of the things, one of the reasons I wanted to bring this up is just that, you know, if the Board of Selectmen does consider a traffic study based on that petition that was made for Farquhar Road, you know, I, I think it just should be noted that it should be more than just Farquhar Road, and it should really be, I, I think the biggest issue certainly is still related to these heavy-traffic weekends. I mean, that's when you really see the big impact. And I'm not saying it doesn't happen all the time, but, I mean, a traffic study, if it's, it's reviewed, you know, should consider the total impact on the entire town.
May I speak?
Sure.
To the chair, I'd like to just mention that kudos to the people in that area of Farquhar Road who brought it forward to our BOS committee, so that now we are, all of a sudden, we're discussing the fact that there is an issue on our residential roads and that we, as a town, are capable of making a change in that. And so I believe that the BOS is working on it, the TA is working on it, and I look forward to, for that study to be completed or the, or the contact made sooner rather than later. And it's not just holiday weekends, as we know, who live in the area.
No, but it's.
It's worse on holiday weekends.
Holiday weekends, it's totally.
Correct.
Has the Board of Selectmen approached District 3 with any kind of a letter?
No.
With concerns? I mean, maybe that's another route you can go, and, you know.
That's, that's the crux and the problems, you know, 84 and Mass Pike.
Right, exactly.
Even on Thanksgiving weekend, it was so horrendous that cars were actually now taking back Access Road to the Public House and then coming out on Haynes Street. So I don't imagine the Public House is going to be too thrilled when they see that continuing.
Yeah.
Okay, no, after you.
And the other, I, I know you guys discuss signage and stuff like that, and maybe just a quick thing is, you know, I've seen them in other local, local access only, or local residences only.
Well, yeah.
Yes.
You know, on each end of the street. I know that won't, you know.
Ted's checking on that, because there's a whole proper process for that. You can't just throw up a sign.
Town you can on a town road.
Yeah, no, I just, I didn't know if that was, that was being looked at, you know.
In, may I?
Sure.
Sorry. In, in light of what you said, the people on Farquhar Road made a sign, had a sign made that said dead end, because they would all go up Farquhar, they would all go up Blueberry Lane.
Blueberry, because of Blueberry.
Turn around because of the cul-de-sac and come back down. So one of the residents has a yellow sign, and it's there all the time.
Works.
Dead end. And it has stopped them from going up Blueberry, but now they just block it.
Which is a dead end.
Which is a dead end, but now they just block it. I wanted to put a sign, and look, I'll tell you the truth. I wanted to put a sign that said Bridge Out, to see what would happen.
Okay. Well, a lot of these kind of things, we've got to be careful. Jim? Fisk Hill Road does have signs.
Fisk Hill Road does have signs up for the maximum weight of trucks allowed. That doesn't guarantee enforcement, but it guarantees the police the right to place it. And I think if you do that there, it'll be a good point.
It has a sign on the bridge.
Yeah, we have a.
Right at the bridge.
Yeah, but it's because of the bridge.
At the bridge.
But it's at the bridge.
But the sign is at the bridge.
No, it's at the top of the street.
His signs are each.
Oh, right. That's right. You're right.
Yeah, so we do have signs.
People don't pay attention.
Right, exactly.
So you and I didn't know they were.
I didn't know there was one on the other end.
They will pay attention to the GPS more than the signs.
So hopefully, kind of works.
You know, I, you know, in order to get things changed, we will need MassDOT's approval. Secondly, you know, there are three companies that handle all of the GPS in North America, and I've had experience on notifying them. For example, if you have a street that has been changed from two-way to one-way streets, so all you have to do is notify them, and they change the map.
Great.
So to notify them to block Farquhar Road, I had suggested at a Selectmen's meeting that we notify the three major.
Great.
GIS, or GPS companies and just notify them that there's an issue there.
Very good. Well, thank you. Jean, update, town planners' update?
Just quickly, we have the Pilot Travel Center quarterly report. No concerns were noted. And then our next meeting is January 22nd, and since we didn't vote on the Complete Streets prioritization plan, we'll add that to the agenda. We'll start here at 6:30, so we'll have the Escape Room waiver-of-sight plan that I mentioned to you a few weeks ago, and then we'll take a vote on the prioritization plan, and then we will recess from here. We'll go across the street. We'll meet with the Board of Selectmen for a discussion on the Route 15 corridor study and next steps with regards to zoning.
Great. Very good. Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have old business. Ross, any old business?
No.
Heather? Jim? Old business, no? New business?
New business, yes. I was not on the board, but I believe I heard at a town meeting that when the development at the end of New Boston Road was going in, that they would allow a U-turn at 131 and 20 for traffic turning right out of there onto 20. I thought that that sign came down, but now it's back up.
All right.
Was there a change in there?
Yeah, so Mass DOT is actually looking at the, oh, I'm sorry, Charlie.
Oh, go ahead. No, that's fine.
So Mass DOT is actually looking at the issue. I met with them, I would say, late fall. They came out, and I had a meeting with them with Leon Goleman, and they were, I guess, concerned with the amount of resident concerns that they had been getting about that intersection. So they actually sent information to the Board of Selectmen and to planning at the time that they're now actually considering not allowing a left-hand turn, only allowing a right-hand turn out of New Boston Road, and then making some improvements to that intersection so that it allows for the U-turn. And that was initially their proposal or their requirement for Mr. Patel, and then they kind of stayed that requirement for a while to let him open, to see how things were going, to see if that mitigation indeed was going to be enough. So I think we will see some changes there shortly. They'll have to reach out to the Board of Selectmen, I'm assuming, and have a public meeting on that because they will be, their proposal is to eliminate that left-hand turn.
Gotcha. Good. Thank you. Sue?
That's it.
Anything else? No?
Jean, I noticed Sunday where the Center of Hope, there was a sign out there for a church down next to where Fortonados used to be, you know, where they put in the fruit, where they came in tours for the garden and the fruit stand.
Right.
There was a sign there Sunday for a church.
Is that the church? Is that the Life Song one at the cinema?
I'm not sure. I didn't, I should have taken a picture.
Where was the sign?
Where the Center of Hope, where Universal Tag used to be.
That's a different church, though.
A short sign? Like a short sign?
Like a sandwich sign, and it was a sign for a church.
I've seen that for Life Song, but I don't, I'm not sure where they are.
They're at the cinema.
Life Song's in Cinematic.
Oh.
So they're distracting people from there downtown.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
That's something, too, when, on a Sunday, and I just happened to be there on a Sunday, there's not enough parking, if you can believe it, at Hobbs Brook.
Really?
When that church is in service. It's incredible.
There are a lot of people down there.
It's crazy. It's like, you know, it's really a lot of traffic, especially during the holidays when everybody, you know, it was just chaos.
Okay.
I haven't been back since. I won't go on Sundays anymore. It was that bad. It really was. It was really bad.
Okay, very good. Yes, you have something else?
I just wanted to let the board and the public know that the open space plan is up online, especially the map printed at such a small scale, it's hard to really look at all the numbers and the labels. If you go to the Open Space Committee website on the town of Sturbridge webpage, all the maps are there. The full document is there, but everything's broken down by chapters, too, so you can really explore and dive in.
Very good.
The chairman is for our committee.
Okay, great. Well, I'll show you. Put that on the website. Terrific. Very good. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Great.